All right, good evening, everyone. If you would be so kind as to join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we did have a closed session. Do you have anything to report out?
Yes, your mayor. The council instructed the labor negotiator.
All right, great. Thank you for that. All right, roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Anyone want to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have a couple amendments that we want to do is have a moment of silence for the Tishner tragedy and also close in memory of Larry Pruitt, who was a longtime resident of Brisbane, passed away recently. And also, the surfer whose board or car popped up out in Half Moon Bay. We're not sure exactly what happened there, so we could add that to the agenda. I would make a motion to adopt as amended.
All right, so, yeah, let's all take just a moment of silence to remember the Tishner situation. All right, thank you.
So I'll second the agenda.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so first up, I would like to invite Mark Hirschman from Senator Jerry Hill's office.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good evening. I'm delighted to be here this evening on behalf of Senator Jerry Hill to invite you and the community to join the Senator at Madhouse Coffee on March 11th. You'll be there from nine to 10 for one of our Java with Jerry events. It's an opportunity to share your concerns, bring your ideas about what's going on in the state and the community. The coffee is provided by the Senator at no taxpayer expense. And I have a number of flyers that I've noticed are popped up around town, and I'll leave them with the city clerk if that's okay, and ask her to please distribute them to you and any leftovers to the community on the table in the back. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, any questions for Mark?
Welcome, Mark. Say hi to Jerry. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it and then be out of town and with a new job, so.
Yeah, you know, I think that's just, you know, really great that Senator Hill, you know, he doesn't just come like once in a blue moon. He has, he comes on a regular basis, you know, and checks in with us. And that's a, that's a very noble thing that he does. He really stays connected with the people that he serves in Sacramento.
Well, I want you also to know that we do have our office. Thank you for that very much. And, and yes, we try very much to be accessible. I can also let you know, April 14th is our annual open house at our office in San Mateo. And that'll be from roughly 4:30 to 6:30. Don't quote me on the time if we change it. I don't think we put the flyers out, but it'll be late, late evening, so we try to mix it up, morning events and evening events. And so, our office on El Camino in San Mateo. But I am the district director for the Senator, and our office in San Mateo is open during regular business hours. So if you or any, anyone in the community has questions, issues with the state agency, issues regarding legislation, we welcome those comments and feel free to give us a call, so.
Thanks a lot, Mark.
Thanks so much. Have a great evening.
Yeah, enjoy the rest of your evening, too.
Quick question. For the Java with Jerry, can you, can you say again what time that was going to be from?
It's from nine to 10.
Nine to 10.
It's March 11th at Madhouse Coffee, 402 Visitation. And have flyers, Spanish one side and English the other.
That's Thursday, right?
Nope, Friday, March 11th.
Oh, Friday.
Yep, a week from tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Look forward to seeing you there.
All right, take it easy, Mark. All right, so next up, we have presentations. We have some new employees. Welcome. Maria, you want to do the ceremony?
Okay, I'm going to ask our new employees if you could please stand here. It's my pleasure to introduce you all to the city council and to the residents of Brisbane. Go ahead, and let's see, actually, first, I'd like to introduce Jeff Franco. He's been appointed to, who, as our aquatics recreation program coordinator. Jeff grew up in Pacifico, where he attended Terra Nova High School and worked his first job as a lifeguard at Oceana Pool. He then went on to study at College of San Mateo, where he completed the fire technology program. After College of San Mateo, he attended Sacramento State University, where he majored in recreation administration. He has worked full-time in the recreation field for 10-plus years. He's an avid sports fan with his favorite team being the San Francisco Giants. And he also enjoys many outdoor activities, including fishing, running, and bike riding. Next to him is Randy Thomas. He's been appointed to Public Works as our maintenance worker one. Randy previously worked for the town of Hillsborough as a street maintenance worker and the city of San Mateo as a building maintenance worker. He attended Alone Community College in Fremont, where he originally studied broadcasting. Along with having a beautiful wife and daughter, he's now a San Francisco fan, 49ers fan, as well as an Oakland A's fan. If you're wondering, we did ask them to provide bios. That's why we have all this information. His hobbies include surfing and biking, and he is very excited to join in the team at Brisbane and start his new career with us. Next to Randy is Michelle Moneda. She was appointed as our code enforcement officer. Michelle grew up in San Diego and graduated from San Diego State University with a bachelor's of science in criminal justice administration. She previously worked in the medical industry as a certified nursing assistant, flambo- bottomist, I hope I pronounced that right, and emergency room technician. She later worked as a paralegal for a law office and began her public service career as a community service officer for the city of La Mesa. She's been married for 22 years with her husband Jeff, who actually is the director of Public Works and city engineer for Foster City. And she has two adult children.
Nice.
And finally, we have Frank Lozano, who has been appointed to Public Works as a maintenance worker one. Prior to his employment with the city of Brisbane, Frank gained 17 years of experience in the construction industry. After a short stint as a stationary engineer with the city in Caldas County of San Francisco, he accepted his position with the city of Brisbane as a member of the Public Works Department. In his off-time, he enjoys hiking, camping, and other outdoor activities with his family. And one of our new employees that was unable to be here because he's actually working right now in the sports program is Ricardo Monroy. He was also appointed as a recreation program coordinator. He has worked in recreation as an after-school leader for the city of San Bruno and then worked as a social educator coordinator for the Boys and Girls Club. He's also had eight years of experience working for the city of Menlo Park, where he served in capacities as camp counselor, recreation leader, soccer coach, camp director, and ultimately as a program assistant. I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to meet him as well. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to our new employees.
Yeah, welcome to Brisbane and, yeah, being a part of the team. You know, Maria, it was great having the bios. Just to hear a little bit, you know, insight to, you know, what you guys like to do. And because, you know, when you're part of the team, you know, it's good to know what you like and things that you can connect with. So, yeah, I hope you, I hope you really enjoy working here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maria. All right, we also have another presentation. Commander Meisner.
So if I can move this over to the lower dais here. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What I want to show you today is something we're quite excited about, and that's a new web-based police blotter. As many of you may be aware, on the screen, I have our city website and where we currently have displayed our police blotter, which is just a list of what we would consider items of interest to the public, of what police activities occurred for the month. And in this form, you click on it and it turns out to be a Word document that people can read through. And we also print that document as well for people who don't have computers and whatnot. But, you know, in this day and age, we're hoping to improve on that. This, last year in 2015, as you know, we switched to a new records management system. And part of that records management system, we were offered a web-based system allowing the public to see what we do every day. We hadn't rolled this out yet because we found that this actually collects all data that comes through our computer aided dispatch. It's very data-driven, is very interesting. People can search it, but it doesn't give a whole lot of detail. It just doesn't give that kind of personal detail that we give in the other blotter, where we actually write a narrative that people can read and get an idea of what we do. Luckily for us, we had a resident come to our rescue, Kyle Adams, who's sitting behind me, and he'll come up and show you what he's done. He actually contacted us out of the blue. He saw what we were doing on our city website, and he's a software engineer. And he saw a need for something that's more user-friendly, that people could read through, they could search, they could look on a map and whatnot. So on his own, he came up with his own version of the police blotter that is very easy to use, very easy to search. We can enter, we enter our comments, much like the old system, but instead of having to wait two weeks after the month's over, which means some of the stuff is six weeks old, people will be able to read what's going on as soon as we enter it. So it might be three or four days old, but not six weeks old. So people are going to get a lot more current information. They're going to get a lot more to search and look at. So what I'd like to do is introduce Kyle and have him come up here and kind of walk you through what he did and what his thoughts were in creating this. Kyle?
Hi, so yeah, I'm Kyle Adams. I moved here about four years ago. And I was just looking through the Brisbane, you know, city website and all of that. And I stumbled across the blotter, which had seven years of data in it, which was phenomenal. Nobody really keeps around seven years of historical data from their police department. So I figured I'd jump all over that and build the blotter app, which you can see here. So if anybody wants to get to this, it's brisbane.townblotter.com. It's also linked to from the old blotter website over here at the top. And it'll take a few minutes to load, so just be patient. But once it gets into here, you can go through a little tutorial. This will kind of walk you through how to use it, how to adjust the date range you're looking at. So if you want to look at the last month or you want to look at the last week, you can get that by adjusting the date range, and I'll show you that in a moment. You can change how all the events show up on the map, so you can see what types of crimes happened where. You can see all of this in a list view. So if you want to, you know, look at the blotter while you're drinking your morning coffee or whatever else, and you don't want to click through a map, you can just look at a nice date-sorted list. And finally, you can sort by various crime categories. These are not like the official crime categories. These are more just like, did the word "death" appear somewhere in the incident? In the stuff that the police department is adding now, they'll all be accurate. But from ones before, a year ago, I had to kind of just use search terms. So bear with me if things like assault tend to show up in spots they shouldn't, but for the most part, they should be accurate. And then you get to the actual, the blotter. So what this does is it gives you a map, and you'll see the date range over here. So this is the last year of data. You can click that and actually move it around, so you can look at different times of the last seven years. You can also expand it and look at more time, so the last few years. And I'll just go to all time. So this is all seven years of data. So if you want to, you can click on any one of the map items here, and it'll pull up the descriptions. So this is the police description of what happened at that particular time and all of the categories. So this was a fraud incident involving petty theft. So you can get that information. You can get the temperature and the weather information for that day, and you can find out where it is as well. So I was trying to paint a picture of like what was going on when the incident took place. I was going to get images in there, but.
Well, weather-related, huh?
It was a full moon.
I'll link it in the nest eventually. All right, so on the main page, you can switch which type of map markers you're looking at. So right now, I had it on like low, medium, and high. You can also switch it to the actual like crime that took place. So this will show you, you know, there was vandalism, or there was an accident, or there was a gun incident over here. So I can get a warrant arrest right there. So you can kind of find things a lot more easily that way. And then also, we have search. So let's just say you wanted to find out, and this is actually one of the use cases I started with, is I was watching some documentary on copper theft, and I was curious how much copper theft happens in Brisbane. So type in the term "copper", and I'm going to get rid of all of the categories that I'm showing right now. So all the low, mediums, and highs. And then we're just going to go back and select theft. And so if I go back up to here and I select grand theft, you can now see all of the copper theft that occurred in the last seven years in Brisbane, or at least the ones that I was able to figure out were copper theft. So you can see there's actually a lot of it going on right here and over by the power station by the Seven Mile House. So lots of interesting, fun little things you can figure out by looking through the blotter data.
It was a wire manufacturing, wasn't it?
So, yeah, lots of fun stuff to look through. So basically, you just select any categories you want to include the crimes for. So if you include trespassing, you'll get all the trespassing crimes and so forth. You can turn on and off the heat map. You can turn satellite map or go to regular map. And you can also get the list, as I mentioned before. So you can see in here, the last copper theft occurred on June 8th, 2012. And if we go and select everything again, you'll see there's things in here like yesterday when the police entered the latest blotter. And then finally, last few things, there's an RSS feed. If you want to subscribe and get notified immediately as the police enter new information, you can do that. You can save it if you want to save it and email it off to a friend or something like that. And you can also print it out if you want to have a hard copy to take to work or, you know, on the bus or commute or something like that. So that's pretty much it. I built this mainly just because I love criminal justice. I have a minor in it. I love looking at all things law enforcement and government. So when I saw this data, I figured, let's go have some fun with it. So give this to the town, and hopefully you guys all find some way to use it that's useful.
Yeah, no, that's very interesting.
Thank you. Must have taken you quite a bit of time to look through seven years of data. That's.
There's some code. I didn't go through it by hand, but yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, yeah, well, just one other, other things we could have you apply your skills to.
Any committees you're interested in?
I'm certainly willing to hear them out, so let me know.
Must not be married or have kids, huh?
Oh, great job. You know, Lisa, what's your, and Bob, I mean, your staff seems pretty receptive to this and.
Yes, actually, they do. We have one, one person, one, actually Sergeant Borg, who does the entering on her. While she, when she's working, as they, as the calls come in or as the cases are entered into the system, she just kind of cut, she cuts and paces the narrative and it uploads it pretty quickly. So it is real-time on her days, usually on her days off, things like Bob said, maybe a couple of days behind. But it really beats waiting six weeks. I know, especially our seniors, for our senior luncheons, they really enjoy reading the blotter. So we still are able to print out a copy and get that to them actually more often. So they're really happy about it as well.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think that's something, I think it was former Mayor Barnes had, I believe, initiated that with the police blotter and with the department. So, yeah, this is, thank you for that.
I find it all really entertaining to read through.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much, Con.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commander Meisner, for the presentation, so. All right, so we'll move on to oral communications. These are things that are not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone has anything that they'd like to mention to the council that's not on the agenda, this is the time. All right, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Motion to approve items A, B, and C.
Do I have a second?
I have an edit to item A, so it was typographical, but I don't know for sure. I haven't seen anything circulated, so I guess we'll pull that. It was one, yeah, it just, it was the assembly bill on mosquito abatement was changed from S-B to A-B.
Okay, move approval of B and C.
We can talk about it.
Okay, all right. So we have a second on B and C?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Lori?
So on the minutes of February 4th, on page three, talking about the mosquito abatement district, it says S-B 1362, and it should be A-B 1362. So I've asked Sherri to make that change.
Okay, so that would be a motion to make the change and.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Okay, moving on to old business. All right, so I'm sure all of you are wondering, why in the heck is this back? Before, we had a very thorough discussion regarding medical marijuana the last time. And so, you know, I had talked with Clay, sent an email to Teresa. And, you know, I don't think anyone on the council, and I apologize if I'm stepping out of line here, thinks that people who, you know, have their medical marijuana cards should not be able to grow their own medical marijuana. And I think we all agree that they should be able to. And, you know, we did agree on the commercial cultivation, not allowing that. The dispensary is not allowing that. But, and we did talk about the personal cultivation in barely lengthy detail, but there was one section that I felt that maybe we didn't have full clarity on and that, you know, bringing it back before us tonight, before we made that recommendation to the full planning commission, I think would be, would be helpful. Because, you know, when we did do the vote, you know, I voted not to move forward with the personal cultivation part of it. And I don't want to say no to those folks that grow their own medical marijuana. I'm in full support of that. But it's the, the, the personal caregiver part of the personal cultivation that I have some concern with. And so I really wanted to flesh that out. We know that a personal caregiver can grow for a patient up to six mature plants and then 12 immature plants. And that that personal caregiver can have five patients. So and then you're looking at 30 plants and potentially 60 plants. And then you could have multiple caregivers in a single household. And so the, the amount of plants just starts to multiply. And then, of course, you can get a doctor's note and have more plants than what the six and the 12. And so, you know, and then you have a grow house. And I, I know that, you know, we talked about not wanting that, but what we had moved forward to the planning commission actually, you know, would allow that. And so before we, I guess, you know, make that final decision to the, to the planning commission, you know, I just wanted to get clarity from everyone. And, you know, and just one last thing about the, the personal caregiver thing is that, yeah, there, there isn't a license that's required to be that personal caregiver. You know, we don't have a business license for it. You know, I have my own business out of my house. I get a business license, but if someone is a personal caregiver and they have all these clients, they, they don't need a business license. And so there's that oversight that, 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 that isn't there. So I know that there's some people in the public that want to speak tonight. So, but before that, you know, we bring people from the community to talk, I wanted to see if there were any questions that perhaps you might have for Teresa or for Lisa in regards to this matter, just to get greater clarification. Any questions for staff?
I'm okay.
Okay, so I know there's some folks from the community that would like to speak. And, and so Paul Buskal, if you wouldn't mind coming up.
Paul Buskal, Brisbane resident. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. So, yeah, I wanted to speak tonight on behalf of our community. While I don't oppose an individual's right to grow their own medical marijuana, I am opposed to collaboratives. And from personal experience to situations that have happened on our block, there was a house on our block that a neighbor saw individuals running from with large bags at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And within an hour, there were people from the county at the house. And it ended up being an illegal grow house, which we were told in the neighborhood that the house could have caught on fire because they illegally jumped power from PG&E and did a very poor job, as well as the overload that was in the house. And what's troubling is, I mean, my whole life, I've heard of situations where people went to rob a drug house and they went to the wrong house. So that's, that's an issue in our community. The risk of fire is an issue in our community. And I don't think, within a residential area, a collaborative should be allowed. It's my understanding from the homeowner that he spent $50,000 to completely remove the sheet rock that was covered in black mold, which is a serious health threat. So we have the risk of fire, we have the risk of black mold, and we have the risk of burglary, which my understanding happened at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. That could have been really ugly, you know? Especially if there were weapons involved, or if somebody came home and the guys were doing what they were doing. So, so new neighbors moved into the house. And again, there was a situation where the county was there, and it ended up being another grow house. Although this time, we were told that the grow house was illegal or it was within the, the, the people had permission as a group of people with their collaborative cards or whatever they do, and they were, again, growing in that house. So that's twice in a row in the same house on our block. So, you know, I, I mean, if, if the city's going to move forward with something like that in a regulated zoning area that's not in residential, that's up to the council. And I really don't have a, I don't have an opposition to something to that effect, but in the residential area, I definitely feel as though it's not something that we should allow within our community. So I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank our department for the work they're putting forward to make this an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. You know, I have a question for, for either Chief Macias or Commander Meisner. So that, that second time that the house became used for growing marijuana, and that was medical marijuana, and how many plants were at that location?
It was a collective grow, and it was a.
It was a collective grow, and it was a caretaker that had, if I'm not mistaken, Sergeant Garcia, four medicinal marijuana cards?
Yes.
Four medicinal marijuana cards that allowed the caretaker, the caregiver, to grow up to three hundred and seven plants, and that's what exactly was what the limit that they had growing at the residence. One card in particular had ninety, that was, the prescription was ninety-nine plants.
Ninety-nine plants for one card, all right. And then, since they had the, you know, the certain allotment of plants, there was nothing that law enforcement could do to shut down that operation. They were in compliance with state law.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. But it's for Teresa, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, I met with Clay and we were kind of discussing this, and I just wanted to bring forward the question that I had asked to Clay, who then asked it to you. So, can we legally limit a co-op from occurring? Can we say, okay, they're only, from your response to that email, I gathered that we could not, we could not say that, we could not limit a co-op from happening, right? We cannot say, oh, you can't have X amount of medical marijuana cardholders attached to one residence, right?
You could require that the cardholders have a particular residence as their primary residence. So, in other words, only allow growing where someone actually lives. You could limit the number or the, either the number of plants or the amount of room that the plants take, the cultivation area, through your zoning ordinance. Now, you can't do that through any sort of ordinance that makes it a crime. State law preempts us from turning cultivation or possession of marijuana into a crime. So, we have state law and we can't go further. But as a land use matter, you could impose restrictions on the number of plants you could, or the area of cultivation. You could require it only in certain types of zones, so for example, only in a residential zone, only where someone has their primary residence. It would be problematic to start dictating who can live in a particular house and impose restrictions on that only for people who have certain disabilities. We would then, that would be a problem. But you can get at the problem by getting directly at the plants and imposing restrictions on the number of plants that can be grown, regardless of the number of caregivers or patients who may reside there.
That's what I think.
And certainly, if a particular patient needs more medical marijuana, then they would then be permitted to grow in Brisbane, they would be able to then purchase the difference. If, so if you have an individual, if you cap it to say no more than ten plants or no more than whatever the magic number is, I don't know what it is, but that individual actually needs more, they would then be in the position of needing to purchase the balance through a dispensary or through a delivery service.
Or they just need to have another, you know, they find somewhere else to grow it, right?
A different caregiver to grow it.
A different, yeah, a different, you know.
A different location.
Yeah.
Right, and if you restricted it in Brisbane, that location would have to be outside of Brisbane.
Right, exactly, because then it wouldn't be their primary residence.
Right.
If that was something that we were gonna.
So, there are ways to get at the restrictions. I would encourage the council not to dictate what, where people can live, but more what they can do in terms of growth if you want to impose a restriction on the number of plants that someone may grow.
Okay, Lori?
I have a follow-up question to that. So, you had said one of the restrictions could be that cultivation for a cooperative could not be in a residential zone. Is that something that we could do, to say it could not be allowed in a residential area in Brisbane?
You could say, you could pick a zone where you wanted it. And so, one suggestion that I had made in the staff report was to say the only place that you can cultivate for personal medicinal use would be a residential zone. That would be one way to get at it. A member of the public suggested that if you want to allow lots of caregivers to get together to cultivate, that perhaps you do that in a different kind of zone. So, we could look at what the possibilities are. It is important to notice that the current structure of collaboratives and cooperatives, which are currently allowed under state law, will go away. As soon as the state starts issuing the business licenses for medical marijuana businesses, those collectives and collaboratives sunset one year after licenses start issuing. So, eventually, the collectives and collaboratives will go away. And then, the only way patients and caregivers may grow marijuana is either to grow it themselves, either the patient or the caregiver, or to go through a dispensary and purchase it.
All right, Kima?
Thank you, Mayor Lentz, council members, good evening. My name is Kima Hauck, and I come here today not as the Chair of the Open Space and Ecology Committee, nor as a member of Brisbane's Elementary School Site Council, nor as a community member working for passage of Measure B. I'm here tonight as a neighbor, and I'm here as a neighbor who suffers from avascular necrosis. Avascular necrosis is a condition that occurs when a piece of bone or body tissue stops receiving blood and starts to decay inside the body. In my case, I broke my wrist twenty years ago, and it went without medical attention due to my being uninsured and without financial resources or knowledge of public health options. And thus, the broken part of my wrist bone slowly died inside of me. Ten years later, surgery tried to reattach the rotten fragment of my bone with a pin, and after rehabilitation, I was left with impaired mobility, reduced strength, periodic inflammation, and chronic pain. I received the doctor's recommendation for cannabis to reduce the inflammation, as well as for chronic pain management, and I have registered as a medical marijuana patient in the state of California under the Compassionate Use Act. When my wife and I lived on King's Road and fell in love with Brisbane, one of the things that we looked forward to was having a garden where we could relax and grow vegetables and watch the butterflies. I have childhood memories of eating tomatoes from my mother's garden while listening to my grandmother talk about her garden in the old country. Well, we finally got a chance when we bought our house on Alvarado Street last year, and last year, I grew my first tomatoes, basil, tomato, green peppers, green beans, and for the first time, I grew a few cannabis plants. They were nothing special, I couldn't have sold them if I tried, but it was a fun gardening project. My tomatoes and my peppers were much better. So, as a homeowner and a father, I'm aware of and I completely agree with the council's efforts to ensure that Brisbane's residential neighborhoods are not used for marijuana grow houses. Whether they are completely illicit or exploiting a caregiver loophole, I do not want large-scale marijuana production in our homes or our neighborhoods. Residential growing operations are fire threats, environmentally toxic, public safety hazards, and social nuisances. I support the council in enacting code to augment existing civil, criminal, and commercial codes to keep these operations out or to get, or to keep them, to keep these operations out of our town. I'm also familiar with the September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen passage of the Medical Marijuana Regulations and Safety Act to bring better state regulations to the medical marijuana industry in California, and I recognize the right of the City of Brisbane to adjust its regulatory posture with respect to medical marijuana in advance of these state regulations. I nevertheless respectfully request that an allowance for personal cultivation of up to six plants or whatever is the will of the council be maintained for Brisbane patients who choose to try to grow some of their own medicine in their garden. Since the voters of California wisely and historically voted for the approval of Proposition two fifteen, the Compassionate Use Act, twenty-two other states and the District of Columbia have followed suit and enacted some form of medical marijuana laws, and now even social and recreational use is legal in Colorado, Oregon, Washington, and Alaska. Many local friends and other residents of Brisbane have reached out to me to thank me for speaking out on this issue. Some of them stay quiet on account of their jobs or other local relationships that are still impacted by a legacy of stigma towards cannabis use. Others have said they would publicly support me. But in either case, I'm here on behalf of all of them and for all other medical marijuana patients in Brisbane. At some point, twenty years after medical marijuana became legal, at a time when over half the population of the USA lives in states with some kind of medical marijuana law, it's time to come out and say enough already. In the same way that the social norms and laws regarding marriage equality have rapidly and irrevocably shifted after decades of perseverance and activism, society's views about marijuana are similarly experiencing a transformative public culmination of decades of effort and activism. I know that the City Council considers the variety of perspectives in the diverse community of Brisbane and that it is responsive to the opinions of its constituents. I therefore respectfully ask that the council consider my request to amend proposed medical marijuana rules to permit patients to grow six plants or twelve immature plants for personal use only. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Kima. Is there anyone else out in the public who would like to talk on this matter? Okay. So, you know, I'd like to, you know, hopefully get us to that point to provide a unanimous, you know, recommendation to the planning commission in regards to personal cultivation that, you know, respects the end user, but closes those loopholes for caregivers. And so, I know that you all, you know, there was three votes for it, and, you know, to leave it as is, and, you know, if that's still the wishes of the majority of the council, then we'll just leave it at that. But if you're willing to make an adjustment, I hope that you would, because I'd like to support you in that decision to, in that recommendation to the planning commission. So, I'm just gonna put it out to the three of you.
Yeah, if I could, Cliff, I'd like to go first, because, you know, I switched on my vote mainly, you know, from both Terry and Madison, I thought made a reasonable compassionate argument, but to me, it was just towards patient personal growth of six plants. It wasn't about the cooperative, and maybe we didn't really clarify that, because I think Commander Meisner was very succinct in saying how problematic that is, and I think Paul Buskal, who was subjected to that in his neighborhood, enhanced that. So, you know, for me, I would like to take that portion out if that was in there, because I think for a patient to be able to grow their six, I'm good with that, or the twelve young plants, but you had a part of the co-ops or the caregiver, you know, it's just like a back door of really probably being a commercial operation that's just not really, I don't know, maybe doesn't have the altruism that, you know, comes across as having, you know, it's just, you know, problematic. And so, yeah, I'd like to see that part addressed. So, and that's really where I was coming from when I did switch my position, you know, due to Terry and Madison's argument, because if I heard you correctly, that's what, where you were at, so.
Well, in response to that, I think that we all agreed that nobody wanted to live next to a grow house and that nobody should be subjected to living next to a grow house. And one of the comments that I had made was that perhaps we could do, format our response to having a limit on how many active cardholders and what amount of plants per parcel in our residential areas. And so, whether that number is six with twelve immature plants, I think that that gives, you know, if somebody's growing indoors, I think it's a three-month or four-month cycle for harvestability, and outdoors, you'd assume it'd be just one season of growth, just like growing tomatoes. So, I would be in favor of having some sort of limits on the amount of square footage per residence and having that a cardholder be either the caregiver, but not a multiple caregiver, or a cardholder, but not multiple cardholders. Not to say that if a husband and wife both happen to have cards, that they couldn't have, if it's six plants per card or per residence, that, but I do think that limits would work in this case where they're reasonable limits.
What about you, Madison?
Well, you know, I think there's a happy medium. You want to make sure that people have access to their medicine in an affordable way, but that you're not attracting crime. From what I gathered from Clay and from Teresa was that we can't say how many cardholders can be attached to a house, because that then becomes discrimination. And how I understood that, I think what we can limit is the overall plants. So, you know, whether there are two people or twelve people who have cards that are attached to a residence, it's the maxi at a twenty, for example. So, I think that that's something that we, that makes more sense to look at, the overall limitation on the plants. I also like the idea of having it be a primary residence. I think that also limits the possibility of having a cooperative situation in which there are, there's somebody, a caregiver, who is planting, is harvesting for, you know, or growing for five people. So, having a primary residence would be, I think, a way to assist our police. And then, I also thinking about restricting the area in which you can grow, so the max amount of square feet, looking at that and maybe reducing that. Because if you are really only growing six plants, you don't need that much space, so it would definitely not, it wouldn't impact the people who are truly using it for their personal use, but it would, it would address those people who are going above and beyond that, and it's becoming more of a business. So, in my discussion with, when I met with Clay, really what he was getting at with me was, you know, we just want to give our police department as many tools in their toolbox that they can use, versus before, you know, they had their hands tied. So, how can we give them tools that are going to help them when this situation arises, but also not harm the people who are truly using it for personal use? And I think with what Teresa has laid out here, there are a lot of options in which we can do both of those things. What I don't want to limit is say, okay, you know, state allows everyone to have six mature plants or twelve immature plants, and for us to say, okay, in Brisbane, you can only have three, for example, because then people can still co-op together, but they may not have as many plants, but people can still come together, even if you reduce the amount that you're allowed personally to have. So, I think that ends up then harming people who are growing for personal use and doesn't do much to restrict people who are gonna co-op together and still have a big grow house. So, I think in looking at the other areas that we talked about, residence, overall amount of plants, and square footage of growing space would be able to kind of satisfy both ends of the spectrum. So, that's my comment.
Lori?
Yeah, and, yeah, thank you, Cliff, for raising this issue, because I think we kind of, you know, we heard it discussed, but we didn't, it didn't end up, you know, in what the decision was. So, I think, you know, we all agree that this is a potential loophole. There's been two incidences at the same house where this, where a grow house has occurred, and I think, you know, minimizing the impact to the neighbors and to the community is what's important, and we can do that and still balance the rights of people to grow for personal cultivation. So, I think, you know, sending this to the planning commission with all these options, and I also would like to include the option that Paul Buskal mentioned about allowing or not allowing collective cultivation in certain zones throughout the city. That could also be an additional option that is considered, you know, just to have all the tools possible that the police could use. that the police could use.
All right, all right. So, you know, I want to thank my council colleagues for hearing this out and coming up with great suggestions to recommend to the planning commission. And that I feel now as a council, we can all agree that, okay, yeah, let's give this to the planning commission, have them work out the, you know, whatever details that they feel that are necessary, different options, and then that'll come back to the council for the final, I guess it would be an ordinance. Yeah, okay.
Can I just confirm with everyone that, because from the way I initially read the staff report, Clay and I were kind of going back and forth in how we were interpreting it, and to me, it sounded like there was a suggestion of limiting the amount of plants you can have for personal use. So I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, that we're still, you know, okay with people getting their state allotment of, you know, six or twelve plants, but what we're looking at restricting is the overall amount of plants in a house and restricting that to whether, you know, be a residence and then the amount of square feet. So that's what we're recommending the planning commission to look at, right?
Yes, I would agree with that. Yeah, I mean, everyone feels that the state...
That's pretty clear direction, I think.
Direction, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to confirm.
Okay. Do you have anything, comments you want to make, Teresa, are you good?
I think staff has enough direction to run with us and bring you back something that's within the ballpark of what you want to see.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so, moving on to new business, and thank you, Paul and Kima, for coming, sharing your stories. All right, consider introduction of ordinance number 600, waiving first reading, amending Division VII of Title IX of the Brisbane Municipal Code to clarify the scope and meaning of the city's weapon control regulations, to conform those regulations to current federal and state law. Teresa?
Thank you very much. Calgun's Foundation informed city staff some time ago that in Calgun's view, state and federal law preempt the city's current regulations governing how firearms may be carried in Brisbane. That assertion caused us to take a more comprehensive look at the city's more than fifty-year-old weapon control ordinance. The purpose of this item is to amend the city's outdated weapon control regulations to clarify their scope and meaning and to conform those regulations to current state and federal law. The city's current weapon control regulations are divided into two chapters. The first chapter regulates discharge, use, carrying, and sale to minors of firearms and a broad range of other weapons that project objects, including bows and slingshots. The second section of the weapon control ordinance regulates the carrying possession and in some instances, the sale or transfer of certain types of knives, similar cutting or stabbing weapons, and clubs. None of the regulations that deal with knives and clubs prohibit the possession or use of ordinary knives, tools, or equipment for legitimate work, business, sport, or recreational purposes. Essentially, the provisions prohibit the carrying of these weapons while loitering or while engaged in disorderly conduct. The provision also prohibits the sale or possession of one type of knife, which is a switchblade knife. Since the city adopted its gun control provisions more than a half century ago, a broad scheme of federal and state gun control regulations have been adopted. Among other things, the current federal and state laws ban the possession of certain types of firearms altogether and ban the sale of firearms and ammunition to minors. State law also regulates how firearms can be carried in public within the boundaries of a city. State law defines a number of exceptions to its carry regulations. Those include an exception for those who obtain a license to carry a loaded concealed handgun in public. There's an exception for a limited category of individuals who have obtained a restraining order under certain conditions. And state law also provides exceptions for certain categories of individuals, including peace officers and military officers, security guards, and the list goes on. State law also regulates other types of weapons that are subject to the city's weapon control ordinance. State law prohibits the open display or exposure of any imitation firearm in a public place. An imitation firearm is a, any sort of gun, whether it's a toy gun, a BB gun, or other type of gun, that is so realistic in appearance that a reasonable person could mistake it for a real firearm. And so imitation firearms cannot be carried, exposed in a public place. And a public place within the meaning of this provision is defined quite broadly to include streets, sidewalks, bridges, alleys, plazas, parks, driveways, front yards, parking lots, vehicles, buildings open to the public, a building or dwelling entrance, and schools. We are recommending a number of amendments to the city's current ordinance. And I'd like to address first the section of your ordinance that deals with firearms and other weapons that project guns. I sometimes refer to those as shooting weapons, just to make it a little easier to say here. The first section, the first amendment we recommend has to do with the carry regulations under your ordinance. Currently, your ordinance makes it unlawful to carry anywhere in Brisbane firearms or any other shooting weapon unless the weapon is unloaded with the breech or magazine open, that's the part that essentially holds the ammunition, or the main parts of the weapon broken down and separated. Because state law and to some extent, federal law dictate the manner in which firearms and imitation firearms may be carried in Brisbane, we recommend that the council repeal the city's current regulations governing the carrying of firearms and imitation firearms in Brisbane. I'd like to go over very briefly what some of the, that there are some discrepancies between the city's current carry restrictions and state and federal law governing firearms and imitation firearms. First, the city's regulations ban certain methods of carrying and transporting firearms and imitation firearms that state law expressly permits. For example, under state law, under certain conditions, an individual may carry an unloaded concealed handgun in a locked container outside of a vehicle without breaking any parts down, but doing so would violate the city's ordinance. Likewise, the city's carry restrictions apply even to individuals who hold a license under the state law for carrying a concealed loaded weapon in public. Second, the city's regulations purport to authorize the carrying of firearms and other weapons in public in ways that state law bans. For example, under the city's ordinance, it would be lawful to openly carry in public an unloaded firearm or imitation firearm that project, or imitation firearm, so long as the breech or magazine is open or the main parts are broken down. But under state law, subject to very narrow exemptions, firearms and imitation firearms may not be carried openly in public regardless of whether the gun is loaded or not, or has its parts broken down. And third, to the extent that the city's carry regulations apply to the carrying of firearms for self-defense purposes, in certain very narrow circumstances, that regulation may conflict with the rights of individuals under the Second Amendment of the Federal Constitution. So for all of those reasons, we recommend that the city repeal the carry provisions related to firearms and imitation firearms. Now, the council would need to consider whether or not to continue to regulate the carrying of other shooting weapons that are not regulated by state or federal law. Should the council wish to continue to regulate in this area, the police chief recommends that the council impose the same carry restrictions that state law imposes on imitation firearms to the carrying of all BB guns, whether they're imitation firearms or not, spot marker guns, which are paintball guns, again, whether or not they are realistic enough to constitute an imitation firearm, and to bows, arrows, and slingshots. The chief advises, however, that there's no need to impose carry regulations on anvils or skeet launchers, which are two types of weapons that are otherwise currently regulated under Chapter 9.52. Should the council adopt this amendment to the carry provisions, no BB gun, spot marker gun, slingshot, bow, or arrow could be carried openly in any street, sidewalk, plaza, parking lot, parked or moving vehicle, building open to the public, school, building or dwelling entrance, that is, a building entrance or a dwelling entrance, a driveway or a front yard. The proposed ordinance in front of you contains the amendment that would accomplish that result. If the council instead wishes not to continue to regulate the carrying of weapons governed under the city ordinance beyond the requirements that state and federal law imposes, we recommend that the council repeal the carry provisions set forth in Chapter 9.52. The Second Amendment that we recommend that the council make is to narrow the restriction on sales to minors. Current state and federal law preclude the sale of firearms and firearm ammunition to minors, and state law bans the sale of any BB gun or spot marker gun to minors. Further, state law has expressly preempted the field in the area of regulating the sale of imitation firearms, BB guns, and spot marker guns, thereby precluding any local government from creating further regulations in this area. For these reasons, the city's regulations permitting the sale of any shooting weapon defined under its ordinance to a minor with the consent of a parent or guardian is not enforceable where the minor seeks to buy a firearm, imitation firearm, BB gun, spot marker gun, or firearm ammunition. Rather, federal and state law flatly ban the sale. The city, however, is free to continue to regulate the circumstances under which weapons not regulated by state and federal law, like slingshots, bows, and arrows, may be sold to minors. Staff recommends that the city amend the current Section 9.52.020 to make clear that the provision applies only to the sale of slingshots, bows, and arrows, and the proposed ordinance contains that recommended amendment. The ordinance in front of you also narrows and clarifies the discharge and use restrictions contained in Chapter 9.52. Currently, that chapter makes it unlawful to discharge firearms or other weapons that shoot anywhere within city limits, or to use such weapons to endanger or injure a person, to damage or threaten damage to property, or to the annoyance of others. We recommend a number of amendments to this provision, all of which are incorporated in the ordinance before you. First, the prohibition against using weapons to the annoyance of others is ambiguous and could be construed to ban what state or federal law permits or requires. Indeed, many individuals may be annoyed by those exercising their rights under state or federal law to possess or use weapons. We recommend that the council delete this unnecessary and confusing language. Second, the prohibition against using weapons to injure, endanger, or threaten another person, which are damage or threaten to damage another person's property, is similarly unnecessary because state law makes it a crime to use any weapon to injure a person, damage another person's property, or threaten to do either of those things. The police chief advises us that there is no need for the city to regulate the use of weapons beyond the discharge of those weapons. Accordingly, we recommend that the council amend Section 9.52.10 to limit the scope to simply the discharge of weapons. Third, we recommend that the council amend the discharge provisions to clarify that the discharge of blanks constitutes a discharge within the meaning of 9.52. In other words, making it so that the discharge of blanks is unlawful in Brisbane. Finally, we recommend the council amend 9.52 to create a variety of new exemptions to the weapon discharge prohibition. The recommended exemptions avoid conflicts with state and federal law, permit the discharge of flare guns to signal distress or to provide emergency illumination, and permit the discharge of weapons pursuant to a valid permit issued by the city. Another amendment that we recommend is incorporating state law terms and definitions into the city's local ordinance. We make that recommendation to ensure that the city's regulations remain consistent with state law as state law may be amended from time to time. And attached to the report, the report the council housed is an appendix of the state law terms incorporated by reference into the proposed ordinance along with the current definitions of those terms under state law. We also recommend that council clarify the scope of the weapons regulated. In particular, the draft ordinance eliminates redundant terms and removes the specific reference to blow guns in light of a state law that bans possession or use of blow guns except in very narrow circumstances. Further, the draft ordinance removes from the scope of the weapons regulated many projectile devices that are generally not considered weapons at all. These devices include true toys that are not reasonably capable of inflicting harm and that do not constitute imitation firearms, industrial equipment like, for example, nail guns, athletic equipment, for example, lacrosse sticks or pitching devices, and spraying devices. The proposed ordinance also clarifies the weapon discharge permitting provisions. Chapter 9.52 currently contains two provisions authorizing the council to issue permits for the discharge of weapons in Brisbane. Current Section 9.52.040 addresses permits for shooting and archery ranges. Current Section 9.52.50D addresses permits for the discharge of cannons, anvils, and fireworks in connection with public parades, processions, and gatherings. The proposed ordinance maintains these two existing permit provisions, although for safety reasons, the police chief recommends that discharging of anvils no longer be permitted at public parades, processions, or gatherings. The proposed ordinance amends these provisions to incorporate consistent language for both types of permits that relate to the standard of care required for the weapons. Additionally, the proposed ordinance adds an additional provision for permits the city issues to discharge weapons in connection with entertainment events, movie, television, or video productions. Currently, the police chief or her designee issues such permits. The proposed amendment does not alter that practice. As for the second part of your current weapon ordinance, the provisions that deal with knives and clubs, the proposed ordinance cleans up the city's outdated knife control provisions by removing redundant terms, reorganizing provisions, and clarifying the scope of the chap, that the chapter regulates only knives and other dangerous stabbing or cutting instruments. It removes the regulations related to clubs as unnecessary. Further, as with the prior chapter, the proposed ordinance incorporates state law terms and definitions into the chapter to make the city's regulations conform to state law as it may be amended from time to time. But under the proposed ordinance, Chapter 9.56 would continue to regulate switchblade knives regardless of the blade length, while state law regulates switchblade knives with a blade of two inches or more in length. And then finally, there's a new chapter being added that essentially updates and reorganizes the outdated seizure disposition and violation provisions in your current ordinance and makes them consistent with state and federal law. in your current ordinance and makes them consistent with state and federal law. After my very short presentation.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I thought it was a brief presentation, Teresa.
For a lawyer, that was brief.
All right, so council members have any questions for staff?
I do.
All right, Clark.
You know, I have just a couple of clarifications, Teresa, because you had mentioned that blanks can't be discharged in a city, right? So, but nail guns are okay because it's a construction device. Now, there is a construction device of a nail gun that goes through concrete that actually uses like a twenty-two caliber blank. So, is that problematic? Or can you clarify that, you know, as far as?
The way this is drafted, that the nail gun that you're speaking of, the sort of super powerful one, would be exempted from the discharge provisions. If you want to change that, we would need to alter it. The blanks that are being referenced, and we can clarify it a little bit if you want, are the blanks that you would put in a gun so that it would make a noise.
Like a starter gun, starter pistol, or whatever, yeah, or just.
That, you know, people use in the movies in order to make it sound like a firearm has gone off. There actually is some, in doing the research for this, I learned there is some gunpowder that causes force to come out, but there isn't essentially a projectile that comes out. But there is a force that comes through. And so this is just clarifying that someone can't go, can't have a, can't shoot blanks around town, go around shooting blanks.
Right, right. But I mean, if somebody hears, I mean, how Brisbane's kind of like an echo chamber, and, you know, contractor is using a nail gun to put something down into concrete, you know, it will sound like that.
Right. You would have to, you would have to change this in order to get at that, to get at anything that would be an industrial, essentially a projectile industrial piece of equipment. The way this is drafted, it would exempt that piece of equipment. So if that's, if that's the result you want to achieve, then you're fine as it's drafted.
Yeah, I just think, make the, to be real clear on it, you know, I wouldn't want to see somebody.
Do you, I guess I'm not understanding, are you hoping to ban it? Are you hoping?
No, no, I don't want it banned. I just want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, that's an industrial weapon, even though we're using blanks, because when you're saying blank is, it's kind of a broad statement, from what I understand. It's not really clarifying, is it?
I don't know if the chief has a recommended language proposal, but if you want, we can just define more clearly when we're including blanks, more specifically what we mean.
I think we're clear of the way the ordinance is written. I mean, the tools are exempt. If somebody calls and we need to go check it out because they don't know what the noise is, whether it's an actual gunshot or not, we'll check it out. If it's a tool, tools are exempt. So I think we're clear on that. The way it is, I don't think we need more clarification.
Okay, all right, that's fine. That, you know, I'm sure the discretion there is used. One other thing is homemade potato guns. I'm sure the police department may or may not be familiar with those. Bob's laughing, I think he is.
Not personally, no.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know what I'm talking about. It's because sometimes he uses these, you know, portable air tank with maybe a hundred and twenty PSI of air, which is really a force thing, and maybe a two-inch or three-inch round PVC or ABS pipe. And people put potatoes in them and launch them. Which, you know, I mean, if you're standing in front of it, you know, it's gonna smack you, but it's more of a recreational thing of a bunch of goofballs out on a lake or something, or somewhere. How do you deal with it?
You also have marshmallow guns, too.
Have you ever come across that? I mean, I've seen them.
Yeah, I've seen a variety of things like that that could be hazardous. I, I'm guessing that those might not be covered under the ordinance. Very rare, extremely rare, but I think we would try to reason with the people in terms of common sense to have them stop that activity if it didn't conform to the ordinance.
Okay, I'm just, you know, putting that out there because I have seen those and I'm not exactly sure where that would fall in here, you know, whether it's a recreational item or, you know, because generally, that's where.
You know, it actually, I'd have to research it, but it might be covered under the penal code because it is being expelled by the explosion of force and that may indeed fall under definition of a firearm under the penal code.
Yeah. I'd like to know that. We don't have to change anything right now, but I'd.
So in terms of discharge, I think, I think it's covered under the projectile weapon definition. So it would not be lawful to discharge a potato gun, as I understand a potato gun, under this definition. State law doesn't regulate discharge of firearms as long as it's not being used to threaten anyone. So that's up to the local jurisdiction to do that. So if we don't have a rule that says you can't do it, then it's not unlawful to discharge in a, you know, way that's not threatening to someone. So I, I think a potato gun falls under the definition of a projectile weapon and is not exempted. I've never heard of a marshmallow gun. Is it the same idea, only it shoots a marshmallow?
Yes.
So I guess it would, the police department would need to determine whether it is commonly regarded as a toy and not reasonably capable of inflicting an impairment. I don't know.
I feel like it would be more on the toy line.
I think we let the marshmallow one slide a little bit.
Rubber band gun.
Especially if they had some chocolate to go with it, I think we'd be okay.
I think a potato would definitely do more harm than a marshmallow.
I guess it depends on the look of the marshmallow gun. Because if it looked like you.
A machine gun.
Right? And that would be prohibited.
If it's an imitation firearm, then.
Then that would be regulated.
Then the issue isn't the discharge. The issue is the carrying, and state law would catch you. State law would catch you. This ordinance, as it's drafted, you wouldn't, if it, you wouldn't be able to carry the potato gun. You wouldn't be able to carry the, let's make sure here. If it's not a, if it's not a imitation firearm, then the carrying restrictions would not apply unless we add potato gun to the list of our carrying things. Right now, we have BB devices.
I'm not even, I'm not even shocked at all. I'm just, you know, I'm just more curious, you know, just the thought.
We catch it on the discharge. We catch it on the discharge. So it, I think that a potato gun would fall under the definition of a projectile weapon and not be exempt. I think the marshmallow gun is probably a toy.
I think we're covered. Anything else, Clark?
That's it.
Lori?
All right. So, yeah, thank you, Teresa. I had a, I was getting an education on what some of these weapons were. I had to look some of them up. But the one that I couldn't quite understand was the anvil. So on page seven, it says the police chief recommends that the discharging of anvils no longer be permitted at public parades, processions, or gatherings. And according to my research, an anvil is a block that, it's a hard surface upon which another object is struck.
So, so I had the exact same reaction when I started this project. Why are anvils in this ordinance? And how could an anvil have anything to do with a parade or procession? So an anvil is actually an ironsmith tool. And it's something that, it's a big sort of triangular piece of metal that is used for a blacksmith. Apparently, it has been, there is a long history of shooting anvils where you have one anvil that is essentially the launching pad. And then you put gunpowder, I'm not making this up. You put gunpowder on top of the anvil. And then you put another anvil on top of the gunpowder. And then you light it, which causes, the explosion causes the anvil on top to launch. Makes a very large explosion.
Yeah, the genesis of this is in the southern states.
So anvils would, in that case, you would have a projectile weapon. And so it's caught into this ordinance. There is, in your current ordinance, an exemption that the council may issue a permit for discharging cannons and fireworks and anvils. And so the police chief has recommended that we remove anvils from the list, that probably it's not a great idea to be shooting anvils in.
Sounds like a good recommendation.
I don't know.
But the chief, I mean, the fire, I'm sorry, the police chief did not think it was necessary to regulate how an anvil would be carried in public. And so we are.
Goes along with the potato gun.
Madison, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I would like to get a more deeper understanding from our police chief regarding item one, bullet point B, which is discussing whether to govern the imitation, the carrying of imitation firearms and shooting weapons that aren't regulated by current state or federal law. So I see what the recommendation is, but I'd like to just know a little bit further if this is something that you guys would really like to see us move forward with? Or is it, is it a really big issue? Or is this something that, you know, if you could just speak to that, that would be great.
Well, we are recommending that we include those items, which are the slingshots and the bow and arrow under the same provisions as the carrying for the, under the state law. The idea is that you can't discharge a bow and arrow or a slingshot within the city limits. So, you know, why would we want them carrying it? And the other thing was, I think it would bring, and we have had calls and we have had incidences of both, where it's caused some alarm. If you're, if somebody is seen walking down the street with a bow and arrow, carrying a bow and arrow, it causes some fear and some alarm. And we've had incidences where the slingshots have been used for criminal activity, I mean, doing some mischief. So it just seemed to have them all together under one same provision would be safer too, since it has been that way ever since. So that was my recommendation.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I was curious if, what incidents we've had in the past. And so, so, yeah, I mean, if we can't, if you can't discharge them, then why would you, you know, it makes no sense to be carrying them around? Because then theoretically, you're probably planning on using it. So, okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
So if I can just clarify, it would, it would be okay to carry them, but you can't openly carry them. So.
Okay, right.
And someone may be wanting to carry them to another location where it is okay to use them. And so, you know, if they're in a duffel bag, if they're in, you know, in the trunk of your car, in a duffel bag, the restriction on these items would be you can't carry them openly in a public place. And again, that, for purposes of this, the term "public place" is a pretty broad definition to include, you know, the front yard of a private dwelling, the entryway of a private dwelling. Sort of anywhere where anyone is likely to see you in public is sort of what this means, inside of your car, visibly inside of your car.
Okay.
what about our kids at Halloween that are carrying around a stun, a ray gun? Or a part of a costume, an obvious toy? How is that handled? Is that?
So if we look, one of the things that we, we added to this, we're suggesting that the council add, are some exemptions to the definition of the weapons covered by this ordinance. So if you look on the redline version in front of you on page three, it's in the definition of projectile weapon. It defines projectile weapon. And then the last sentence says projectile weapons do not include any of the following. So these are the carve-outs for things that would otherwise fall within this definition. We are specifically calling them out. And the first exemption is any instrument that when designed and intended, when used as designed and intended by the manufacturer is commonly regarded as a toy and is not reasonably capable of inflicting any impairment of physical condition, function, or senses. So, you know, the toy gun that doesn't constitute an imitation firearm under state law that is clearly a toy, it clearly can't do anything, would fall within this. The Nerf gun, you know, would fall within here. And I don't know what you mean, I'm not sure what the ray gun is. If it doesn't shoot anything out of it, if nothing's coming out, it's just light on there, it isn't a projectile weapon. It has to actually project something.
And item four in that area would be any instrument that sprays liquids, gases, or vapors? That would be like a squirt gun?
Squirt gun.
And?
Or even, a squirt gun may also fall within number one as well. But we just wanted to make clear that whatever's being projected has to be something other than a liquid gas or vapor. So a spray bottle.
But you could, it could still be a weapon if you filled it with acid or?
That's correct, but it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be, fall within this regulation. Obviously, if someone's walking around threatening someone, threatening to hurt someone with, with any item, the police chief would have state law to rely on there. But this, this is something that just flat-out precludes the discharge of any weapon at all. You don't need an intent to hurt. It sort of removes the intent provision. So the police, if anyone shoots off a projectile weapon, they are in violation of this ordinance unless you fit within one of the exemptions.
Okay. And on the knife restriction, is that something, if you're attending the concerts in the park and you have a knife to cut your cheese, are you loitering and having a knife?
No, loitering is sort of hiding and lurking. And it's not sitting in the park having a picnic. With one exception, everything in the knife provision is carrying while loitering. It's carrying while doing something else that's a bit problematic. So you're carrying a knife while loitering or you're carrying while engaged in disorderly conduct. The only exception to that is for switchblades. And your current ordinance flatly bans possession, sale, sale, carrying, possession, loaning, transferring, or giving a switchblade of any blade length. And this doesn't change that.
Okay, and a box cutter is not a switchblade?
I'm not sure.
Currently, a box cutter would not be considered a switchblade, no.
It can take down nine eleven, but it's not illegal?
Yeah.
It's not spring-loaded.
Okay. And then?
Is some spring-loaded box cutters, huh?
There are a number of knives that are unlawful under state law. There's a very long list of them. The only, the only one that, you know, and so to the extent that someone has a kind of knife that they're possessing that is illegal to possess under state law, the police has, the police have a tool under state law to get at those. This would be in addition to whatever regulations there are under state law.
Okay. And so I, I see people who, who are bow hunters or target practice people. And I see their compound bows. It's pretty obvious that that's what they're moving from their car to their residence. So that would have to be hidden to be able to move it from your car to your residence.
A duffel bag. A duffel bag or some.
Case.
Okay. And then, having grown up with teenage boys, they all played paintball and had airsoft and all those. So all, and I assume to a certain degree slingshots, although I was never coordinated enough for that. They always went the wrong direction. So that's all, those kinds of toys are all illegal here now?
No, no, they're not illegal here.
You just can't use them here?
Current, under your current ordinance, you can't discharge them. And this doesn't change that. Under your current ordinance, you, you could have them, but you'd, if you were in public, you had to carry them openly. This ordinance would change that and require all of the things that you listed to be carried as if they were imitation firearms, which means you can have them, but you can't openly carry them in public. They have to be, if it's a slingshot in your pocket, if it's too big to fit in your pocket, you'd have to stick it in a bag.
So how does state law handle paintball guns?
A paintball gun is considered a BB. A paint, paintball gun is considered a BB device. It's defined as a BB device under state law. And state law, some BB devices are considered to be imitation firearms, and some are not considered to be imitation firearms.
So, state law allows their use?
Allows their use, yes. State law does not allow a minor to purchase a BB device, which includes, which means you can't purchase a paintball gun. So, you, you can't, you can't purchase it under state law. If it's an imitation firearm, then state law dictates how it can be carried, which means you can't carry it openly in public. State law does not preclude the discharge, but state law doesn't preclude the discharge of firearms within a city. It's up to the city to, and most cities do have laws that restrict discharge of firearms. State law does not preclude someone from shooting a firearm unless they're doing it in a threatening way or in an attempt to injure someone or injure their property. So, most cities, most local jurisdictions have on their books, like Brisbane does, an ordinance that says you can't shoot firearms in the city. Your ordinance gets at many more things in addition to firearms. And so, this doesn't change that. This is just trying to take what you have on the books and modernize it in light of state and federal law.
All right. I just have one question for Chief Messia. So, is there anything in the, in this ordinance, Chief, that after you've heard us speak and had it, you know, had an opportunity to just let it kind of sit in? Is there anything that you would add or make any changes? Or you feel pretty confident with how it's written as, as we see it?
I feel pretty confident of the way it's written. I think Teresa did a great job in really, in looking, doing some research and updating everything. Commander Meisner and Sergeant Garcia, we've all gone over it and we're pretty confident with the way it's written.
Okay, all right. So, is this something we make a, have a recommendation to move it forward? Do we need a council motion? Or are we just?
Go ahead, make a motion to introduce.
There's no public comment.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right.
And then, there are a couple of, you know, policy questions that, that we've presented. But if, you know, you would have your deliberations and if you like the ordinance as presented, then you would need to.
Okay.
Move to introduce it.
Yeah.
Paul or Kyle, do you guys want to? Okay. So, Clark?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to introduce ordinance number 600, waiving the first reading. Amending Division Seven of Title Nine of Brisbane Municipal Code. And that's as written, as presented.
Well, second.
Okay. And, and is there any council deliberation on this? Or should I call the question?
Yeah, are we going to then discuss the policy questions after?
I mean, I guess we could do that.
Are they include, they're not included in the ordinance?
I, I think if, if it's, if the council likes the ordinance as amended and wants to introduce it, then I think you've, you've.
We've covered it.
You've covered it.
Yeah.
Okay, but you had said, there were a couple of instances where you said, you know, should the council, or some recommendations?
So, I think, I think there's a policy question, and this is on page five of the staff report, section B. And it was an issue that, that Councilmember Davis asked the police chief to clarify, but it's whether or not council wants to continue to regulate the shooting weapons that are not regulated by state and federal law. So, this would be the BB guns and spot marker guns that aren't regulated as imitation firearms, as well as slingshots, bows, and arrows. Whether or not you want to continue to regulate those, the carrying of those in Brisbane. And if you do, then the chief has made a recommendation that we impose on those weapons the same restrictions that state law imposes on imitation firearms.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I agree with that recommendation.
Okay. So, we have a motion, we had a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. Staff reports, Clay?
Just a reminder that next Tuesday evening, we will have our second session on the budget and fiscal planning. That'll be a workshop in here, and I think we start at seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven, okay, it is seven.
All right. That's it? All right. Mayor, council matters? County wide assignments, subcommittee reports? Anybody? CCG or?
I had a water meeting last night, but there wasn't anything really to report. We just heard presentations on governance of possible water agencies. So, nothing concrete.
All right. Madison?
Haven't had anything.
Oh, for Peninsula Clean Energy, we had our last advisory committee meeting last week. And all cities in the county have approved of forming the, and joining the JPA. So, the next meeting in March will be the first meeting of the Board of Directors. And we talked about the implementation plan, which will go before the CPUC for approval. And it will begin phasing in customers starting in October of next year. And within one year, all customers will be online for the program.
Now, that, that next board meeting is the one that I believe we are both out of town for?
That's right. They have two board meetings in the end of March, and I'm not available for those.
Yeah, I think we're both out of town.
So, I've asked if a staff person could go since both the.
Good.
Self and you.
Since Brooke, right?
Yeah.
Clark, any?
Didn't know if we wanted to have one of the other council members, if, if not staff?
I don't know. Well, we're the only appointed council members. I mean, yeah, if any other, other council members are available, you can attend and sit in the audience, but you wouldn't be able to vote. You could certainly give public comment. So, maybe I'll make a note to set, to, to, I could ask Clay to, to send those dates if you have the, do you have the dates for the Peninsula Clean Energy?
All right. Could, could the council recommend that, that staff be proxy and have the ability to vote? Or just?
I didn't think so, but I could check into that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I thought that.
You didn't appoint staff.
Pardon?
I don't think you can.
Yeah, I don't think you can either, but.
But we're not lawyers.
It's the first meeting. It probably, nothing tremendous will happen.
Yeah, I think they're going to continue talking about the implementa, implementation plan. So, it'll be more about policy direction and comments rather than votes at this point. So, you know, I think any comments can certainly come in through public comment.
All right. You know, I did want to make, you know, just an announcement that, you know, so I'm currently on the LPMG. That's the, the body, it's an advisory body to the JPV for Caltrain. The LPMG is, that's like the Calmod, you know, Calmodernization of, of electrification of, of Caltrain. So, what LPMG stands for, I'm not exactly sure. But, you know, we've been having meetings once a month because of high-speed rail. You know, I, you know, I'm already on the roundtable and Hart and commute.org. And my schedule just is not allowing me to, to be at these meetings every month at six PM on, I guess it's maybe the second Thursday of, of every month. Second, or maybe it's the fourth Thursday every month. And so, Clark, you used to be on that group, part of that advisory group, and then you gave that up. But I, I can't do it anymore. So, just wondering.
So, Terry or Madison or?
Where are the meetings?
So, they're in San Carlos at the Sam Tran's office.
The same place that the CCG meetings are. And my Thursdays are pretty well booked between council and CCG and.
What, what time do they meet?
They meet at six. Yeah, so it is tough, you know, it's down in San Carlos, so you have to battle traffic to get down there.
And is this something that every city has a representation on?
I don't think so. Clay, do you know if every city's there?
I, I, well, I, I thought that every city that's on the rail corridor had a representative there. Because it's, it's really kind of an outreach for Caltrain and for high-speed rail. So, it's, I mean, it doesn't really have a lot of authority. As a matter of fact, I don't think it has any authority.
And it doesn't have any authority. It makes recommendations to the Joint Powers Board. Randy is also involved with what's going on with?
Well, a- actually, you got multiple staff people involved. So, Randy and I are going to a, a meeting every two months with the Public Records Directors and City Managers. John attends one that's for the Planning Directors. So, there, there is a lot of communication going on with regards to high-speed rail at this point, and also the Caltrain electrification. So, I think at least on a staff level, we're pretty well piped into at least what's, you know, the, the latest news.
Yes, and, and that's the real reason for being on it, just to be aware of what is going on with Caltrain, but especially with high-speed rail. But we have staff to.
But this isn't one that staff currently attends because you attend?
These particular meetings. But the information that I receive is the exact same information that staff receives. So, it, it is duplicate. It's just that, you know, an elected official gets that information.
You know, Cliff, for the next six months, I, I can't do it at that time, but after six months, I could, I could go, I could attend it. You know? Then it's the second week of the month, right?
You know, we just had a meeting, but I think it's the fourth.
It doesn't interfere with council meetings.
Yeah, I think it's the fourth Thursday of the month.
Oh, okay.
I mean, in, in the meantime, if you want, I mean, we could have a staff person just kind of track it, just to make sure that there's not something being said there that isn't being said otherwise?
Yes, I think that would be highly recommended.
Okay.
I just cannot get to San Carlos at six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, leave the city at five fifteen. So, it's like, on a good day.
That's right. Yeah, and I, I have an announcement. On March seventeenth, Skyline College is having their annual President's Breakfast. And so, yeah, so it's March seventeenth at the South San Francisco Conference Center. It's open to everybody. I will be dropping off some invitations in your boxes, but I'll give Clay a bunch of invitations. And Clay, if you could pass it out to staff and?
That's a midweek.
It is. It's a Thursday, I believe, Thursday or Tuesday.
Nah, it's Saint Patrick's Day. It's an Irish holiday.
Yeah, well, you get your breakfast, and then you're ready to go, ready to celebrate.
Shoot, Clay's going out of the country for it, man. Going to Ireland.
So, yeah.
And then, the other thing I wanted to mention was that through our Economic Development Subcommittee, I guess we've been invited, or, or the mayor's been invited to attend a conference in China that's being organized through the San Mateo County China Trade Association. So, Cliff is not available. So, as Mayor Pro Tem, he's asked me if I can go, and I've accepted. I'm going to be going as part of a delegation in the end of March for about a week, along with council members in Millbrae and South San Francisco. And also, Ron Davis will be representing the Brisbane Chamber. We're going to spend a week in a city near Hong Kong. It's called Zhongshan, where they're going to be having a trade and investment fair conference. And they'll be basically telling us about what investment opportunities they have there, and then also learning about our cities and how they can bring some investments to our city. They have a lot of manufacturing and other industries. So, they've reached out to us. And if the meeting goes well, they've also asked us if we would be interested in becoming what's called a friendship city, which is kind of a lower level from a sister city. That's what they seem to do in China more. It's, it's not like you can have, sister cities, you can only be, I guess, a sister to one other city, but friendship cities are, you know, you can have many friends.
Oh.
So, they've asked us to be their friend. So, we said we'll consider it. You know, we want to learn more about what opportunities there are there. And actually, tomorrow morning, through the Economic Development Subcommittee, we're having the, I think the deputy counsel from the Chinese consulate is coming to Brisbane. He wants to meet with, with us and learn about what investment opportunities are here and learn more about the trip.
What, what does a friendship city mean? Do you know? Or we'll find, we'll find out.
Well, I know Millbrae has done it with some, with the city or two in, in China. So, like I said, it's more, you know, it's just an appreciation, you know, that we have some relationship with that city. And it builds, you know, economic ties, hopefully.
Got it.
All right. Anything else? All right, so we have some written communication at our last council meeting. There was a concern about the heights of the, of the piles out in the baylands. So, we have this information here, and it looks as if the piles are below the required height.
For the Brisbane soils processing operation, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I think sometimes, and I've noticed that on the, what is it? The northeast portion of the property?
The recycling?
Which is actually the recycling operation. So, that's not governed by this.
Okay. And, and though they're, you know, the, the heights are, are below the, the, the set standard, they're very close to the.
Very close.
So, some of them are, and, and, you know, they, they are, what we, what we've seen from the reports this past year is that their net importing is, is dropping. They're still a net importer of, of soils, but it, the number has dropped significantly from a couple of years ago. And at some point, they'll, they will be a net exporter.
Yes. Okay. All right, oral communications, number two. Paul? I thought you were just staying around to listen to all the interesting stuff that we?
Paul Scow, Brisbane resident. Well, it's, it's been nice that you guys have been getting out of here early now that Ray's gone.
He's watching.
You know he's watching.
Hi, Ray. So, council, I have something that I wanted to share with you, a concern that I'm having here in Brisbane, or a situation that came up. Last Thursday, I was building my deck, and I heard this very unusual noise out in the street of plastic or something really loud and just unusual. So, I went out the back of my house, out to the street on visitation, just up from that house, and I found a motorcycle rider lying motionless, flat on his side, facing downhill with a motorcycle facing uphill. And so, you know, right away, I went to his side, I knelt down behind him, supporting his back so he couldn't move. And still at that point, he wasn't moving. So, I tapped him on the shoulder and started saying, hey, you okay? And all of a sudden, he came to. It was real unusual because he was by himself. I didn't hear a motorcycle go by the house, because I was working right in the backyard. But it was a pretty horrific accident. His helmet was scraped from the top of the helmet all the way down the face shield, all the way down the shin guard. His riding gear was, was torn up really bad. So, I'm, you know, I was the only one there, called 911. I was even having trouble staying with the dispatch because he was trying to move and, you know, you don't want him to move. So, I was keeping him from moving and was reassuring him that he was going to be okay and that help was on the way. And he says, my throttle got stuck, and the motorcycle just took off. Well, even at that point, I didn't realize it was electric motorcycle. So, cars were going around us, which I couldn't believe. We're right in the middle of the street, and they're, they're going in, on a driveway to get around us. So, some guy came walking by and he picked up the motorcycle, and the motorcycle took off on him. Fortunately, it didn't run into the both of us that were in the middle of the street. So, I had told the officers that came after the fire department, because they wanted me to stay right there with them while they were trying to get his helmet off and then putting a collar on his neck and so on and so forth. So, I told one of the officers that whoever comes and picks up that motorcycle should know that it took off on this guy that picked it up. It just took off. I mean, he just touched. I mean, he just touched the motorcycle and it took off. And the officer says, well, the company's coming to pick it up. And then at that point, I looked at the bike, and it said Alta. And I know we have Alta Motors here in Brisbane that make electric motorcycles. And there's also a company that makes electric bicycles in Brisbane. So it kind of made sense that I didn't hear a motorcycle, but I heard all this crashing outside. And I'm here tonight to talk about the fact that when the gentleman pulled up in the van, they were putting the guy in the back of the ambulance. I'm sure he had a pretty serious shoulder injury because he was complaining that he wanted me to roll him over because of the shoulder hurting. And I was letting him know that you can't, can't roll you over right now until the fire department gets here. The guy, instead of going to the ambulance to go talk to the guy, he went to the motorcycle and was like, looking the motorcycle over. And I said, just to let you know that the rider said that this bike just took off on him. And you can see a skid mark where, I'm not sure if he grabbed his front brake or his back brake or what he did. But, you know, you know, electric, anything just is different than giving it gas. They, they have a lot of
Torque.
Lot of torque. Well, like I said, he was really, I mean, he could, if he didn't have a full face helmet on and that riding gear, that guy would have been really messed up. So I told the guy that came to pick up the motorcycle, I said, I just want to let you know that when this guy picked up the motorcycle, and your rider even said that it took off. And some guy picked up the motorcycle and it took off on him. The guy says, well, that's why you call it research and development. Okay, knowing that, it's a prototype, okay? I would hope that a company like that in the future wouldn't go on residential streets with the prototype that hasn't been proven yet and has a capacity which the motorcycle and the rider both were about six feet away from a fire hydrant, a telephone pole that he could have ran into, as well as a parked car. Or, you know, fortunately, it was like around noon, and there weren't kids out in the sidewalks or out in the street. But it could have been really ugly. So if we're having companies with a, something that's in the research and development stage, especially something with that capacity, it's, I would hope we can ask them not to do their research and development on public right of ways. Take it to some place that's a secure location. So we might not have a situation like that again in the future. Okay? And I just wanted to, on a lighter note, I was pleased to see that three of our Public Works personnel, who are very dedicated, have been promoted. So that was a really good thing. And those people have good institutional knowledge, especially, especially Kegan here in Brisbane. So, you know, they're right up there with our police and fire as far as the service they provide to protect our health and safety. So that was a good choice.
Definitely.
So, congratulations to them. Thanks.
Paul?
Thank you.
So.
I just realized, I had a look at my calendar, and I forgot to report on three other meetings I went to, if I could do that briefly.
Sure.
So actually, you were at this too. At the Ridge about a week or two ago, we had a neighborhood watch meeting. Commander Meisner was there as well. And the residents at Landmark, several of them have been very active in wanting to create a neighborhood watch program. So we, we talked more about that and about a couple of things that they're interested in pursuing, ideas about putting up neighborhood security cameras and maybe having a neighborhood patrol. Of course, these would, these costs, they understand, would be borne by the residents. But they wanted to know more about how that would work and how the city would cooperate. So we're following up on, on that. But in the meantime, the, the residents have already planned a follow-up meeting and plan to have block captains. And there's a coordinator who, so it's, it's pretty well organized. And they're, it's great because the, the residents up there really want to, you know, make sure they get to know one another and help protect each other. After there was that attempted burglary, that's sort of what instigated all this. And I also went to Congresswoman Jackie Speer's meeting. She had a town hall meeting on the affordability of rents in San Mateo. And there were about 13 cities represented. We were all, were up at the front of the room and a table with Congresswoman Speer. And there were about 250 people in attendance. They had a cutoff admission because so many people were interested and signed up. And they had mostly renters talking about how, you know, how unbelievable it is that their rents have gone up and, you know, they can no longer afford to live here. And they asked that the council members and the county and the Congresswoman consider enacting a just cause ordinance for eviction. And also to have some, not, not rent control, but some measures that would prevent rents from being increased exorbitantly as certain landlords have done. Most of the people there who spoke were from Burlingame and San Mateo. So that's where most of the issues seem to be. And then also, just the other night, Cliff and I were at a, a meeting that Supervisor Pine came to in Brisbane to talk about sea level rise in the baylands. So that was one of the, the Bayland Speaker Series meetings. And it was quite informative. And just learning about, you know, the, the sea level risks throughout the county. And, you know, that, you know, Brisbane isn't, what he said, you know, kind of, it's, it's not noted as one of the places that, that's at particular risk. But we would need to coordinate with Caltrans to figure out whether anything is planned or could be done to protect the, the bayside east of 101 from sea level rise. So I thought that was a very helpful presentation. I just wanted to let everyone know about those.
I forgot about those two meetings. Thank you, Laura, for bringing that up. Terry?
So Dave Pine was also at the meeting that I was at last night, and he discussed some of the sea level rise and also the Measure AA that's going to be on the ballot to re-install tidal marsh. And it's a ballot measure, and I don't want to get into that here. But to follow up a little bit with what Paul talked about, there was an incident with a Google self-driving car a couple of weeks ago that actually got hit by a public bus. And when the driver who was in that prototype vehicle, per the news report, said, well, I didn't realize the bus wasn't going to slow down for me, or I would have overridden the self-driving commands. So I think that it's probably state law where prototypes are allowed on the street. Or, you know, I don't think that we would really, probably have a really good way to keep vehicles that are legal to be on the street off of our streets. But I think it's really an evolving science that's going on with electric vehicles and prototypes. That's just a comment. It doesn't just happen here. It can happen to the Google and the public bus.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I mean, I could see perhaps doing the prototype out in the industrial park. Maybe not the residential area, so.
I mean, would it hurt, would it hurt to just have a conversation, like, just talk to them really quickly about it?
Yeah. I think we can do that.
Yeah.
All right. So, take a motion to adjourn to our next meeting, which is next Tuesday, right?
And I'm neglected to mention that Saturday morning at 10 o'clock here in the council chambers, we'll have our second coyote meeting with the State Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, that's right. That was a good meeting, that, that, the last one, you and Terry and I were there.
Well-attended.
Yeah, it was well-attended.
And also, the Brisbane Artist Evening of Sharing is this Saturday. I believe it's at 7:30 or 8 o'clock at Mission Flu. Always a good event.
Yeah. Is that on the signboard?
Uh, yeah, it has been.
Okay, good.
Um, I think it was announcing Larry Pruitt was on the signboard.
No, but it was on earlier in the week.
Was it? Okay. All right. All right, so we'll, we'll adjourn, closing in memory of, of Larry Pruitt? Okay, so I have a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to adjourn in memory of Larry Pruitt.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone.